Twenty seventh, seven P M. And we're going to go ahead and start the planning board meeting. Before we start, can we do the pledge of allegiance, Board Member Huh?
Yeah, happy to do so.
Thank you.
Let's lead it to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for leading us. And with that, we'll begin the meeting officially with roll call.
Good evening, Board Member Sue.
Here.
Board Member Huh?
Here.
Board Member Sahaba?
Present.
And President Sisneros.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum and three absences, Board Member Ariza, Ruiz, and Wang.
Okay, great. Moving on to agenda changes, anything from staff or?
No.
Nope. Okay, um, and let me just, okay, moving on to non-agenda public comment. Anyone can speak for three minutes for an item that's not agendaized for tonight?
We have no speakers.
No speakers, okay, great. We'll go ahead and close that item. And moving on to consent calendar, we have draft meeting minutes for May twelfth, and we also have item five A, which is the general plan conformance with the capital improvement plan, I believe. So, folks here have any comments if not in motion?
Is five A consent or, oh, okay, should be labeled four B then?
Yes, just to clarify, so it was five A under the regular calendar in error. We can move it to what you described as four B, same item, it's a consent item.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that clarification, so, um, right. Any comments, if not any emotion? The consent calendar, I think, will we open it after the motion? No, we do before.
You need, you need public comment before you make a motion.
Oh, thank you. Do we have any public comments? All right, now we'll go ahead and close the comment. And now do we have a motion?
I'll need to abstain from the minutes I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so then we don't have a quorum for that particular meeting?
Okay, okay, so we'll keep it on until the next meeting?
Yes.
Great. All right, can we make a motion for the general plan conformance item?
Yes, that would be good.
Okay.
I move adoption of, I guess, item four B for the general plans conformance.
I will second.
Great, motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstentions, we have three absent.
Thank you.
Great. All right, and with that, we'll go ahead and move to regular agenda items, which first item here is inclusionary housing update workshop.
I'm just going to move over here because it's maybe more comfortable, but, so, good evening. I'm Steve Buckley, I'm the Planning Services Manager, and I'll be making a brief presentation introduction, really. And then I'll be handing it over to our consultant. So Kirsten Dischinger is here with Street Level Advisors, she's on the Zoom, and she works with Rick Jacobus, and they were our consultants on this project thus far. We contracted them to advise us on policy as well as some of the financials that they're very familiar with in terms of inclusionary housing, affordable housing development, and market rate housing, and how those all sort of synergize if you get your policy right. So, this all came about through the housing element, which was adopted and included several implementation items, sort of a to-do list. And we're working our way down that list. As you know, we've brought you several different ordinance amendments and policy discussions. This one in particular is to refine the sort of rental and ownership housing in terms of both the percentage of inclusionary, the pricing that would be targeted with those different inclusionary programs, as well as possible in-lu fee that would be an alternative to the onsite units. The other option to onsite units is to have a cluster development where a developer partners, say between a market rate and a nonprofit or the housing authority, to develop a separate lot or building with the affordable units which are then supported through onsite services and other funding sources. As you know, we formed a working group a while back and met several times with staff from the Housing Authority and Housing and Human Services Department. So Sylvia Martinez and Simone Falls were engaged in each of those meetings. And we had a couple of you attend several of those meetings. And my takeaway was that we're actually, we have a really good program. You know, we have great development partners in the Housing Authority. We have great regulatory partners in Housing and Human Services. And we're just trying to sort of optimize the inclusionary part. And as I said, the in-lu fee option, given that the housing element found that there's maybe a disconnect between the rental and the ownership programs. And Kirsten will get into that a little bit more. She'll also provide you a little bit more comparison to other cities and some of the findings or recommendations. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to her, and then we'll be available for questions.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Steve, who controls the slides?
I'll do the slides.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Kirsten Dischinger, thanks, Steve, for that great introduction. As Steve said, I'm here tonight to really summarize what we covered in the working group and what our team, Street Level Advisor, were able to bring to the group in terms of trends and best practices. And then I'll review the recommendations that were discussed in our report and the case report. To start with, I'm going to look, I think we want to skip ahead a couple of slides, yeah. We're going to, I'm going to present some trends, both national and regional and inclusionary housing programs. And we're drawing from a survey nationally that was completed in two thousand and nineteen, so that's some older data. And from the local and regional, we're drawing from data from two thousand and four, two thousand and twenty-four, which is very recent. I do want to flag that all of the stuff I'm going to be talking about for the Bay Area and Alameda County was data collected by M T C, self-reported by the jurisdictions prior to them doing any of their housing element rezoning or implementation measures. So just like you're considering today, many jurisdictions throughout the Bay Area are considering small to large changes to their inclusionary program. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at these baseline data. So the first thing really is about who to serve and how much affordable housing you can require. Nationally, the households that are targeted are fifty to eighty percent AMI by almost all the programs. This makes a lot of sense because of the nature of the program and the history of the program, you know, how it dovetails well with other more deeply affordable programs and kind of ends up being the top of many jurisdictions affordability ladders. You'll see that some jurisdictions offer, require inclusionary units or target households above that eighty percent AMI. Those are probably the higher cost jurisdictions where there's still affordability issues at those higher income brackets. If we take a look at the next slide, zooming in on the Bay Area, you'll see that most jurisdictions focus on this fifty to eighty percent AMI again. There's a few programs, about a quarter of them, that go up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. And for those, those are mostly in the higher cost areas like Marin or some of the southern jurisdictions in Silicon Valley. So zooming in on Alameda County, however, that fifty percent and fifty or sixty percent and eighty percent AMI sort of target is pretty consistent. You see there's only two jurisdictions, Alameda, City of Alameda yourselves and Dublin, that offer or require inclusionary rental units above eighty percent AMI. And we'll get into a little more about why that is. Thank you. And I just want to say, like, I do think that a lot of jurisdictions are looking at these requirements. So again, everything you're seeing is like two years ago or one year ago. But for ownership, generally, those programs serve the eighty to the one-twenty. That's really the most common. In Marin, we saw some programs that went up to one hundred and thirty-five percent for homeownership. Of course, the cost of homeownership and the cost of rental in Marin is so much higher that that kind of bump up makes sense. It's really important to get a program that actually can, you know, serves folks that can't be served in the private market, and that's really easy for homeownership in the Bay Area. But it still remains very hard for households to get into ownership, even when the price point is at their affordability level for some lower income households. Other barriers come up like down payment assistance and HOAs. So we're seeing a lot of the programs kind of don't go very far below eighty percent AMI. And then in Alameda County, you'll see that most programs are at the eighty and one-twenty. Only two programs, including the City of Alameda, reach below eighty percent AMI for ownership. Great. In-lu fees, so you guys currently just charge, allow in-lu fees for smaller projects. So just taking a look at what's, what happens with in-lu fees in the Bay Area. Nearly every jurisdiction offers that option to developers so they could build the units or provide, pay the fee. Most are on a square foot basis. The reason I don't have a table or chart in front of you about the fees is most jurisdictions have multiple fee rates for different projects based on their tenure or their building type or their geography, like some neighborhoods, the fee can be higher or lower. And there are some jurisdictions that have twelve or twenty different fee rates that can get very complex. Those fee rates are based on financial feasibility. And also, most jurisdictions try and make that fee rate either exactly equivalent to the cost of onsite or slightly higher if they really want the onsite, or slightly lower if they really want the fee, but generally closer approximate to that. And so that's why you'd see a variation across different factors. And again, the fee rates vary broadly, even in Alameda County. I saw one jurisdiction that charged seventeen dollars a square foot on some projects and then up to fifty-five or sixty for other types of projects, and then a large range in between. And then this is just, you know, I think you don't have a big fee program right now, and there can be some, there's generally jurisdictions prefer or guide programs towards the onsite unit production because it gets you to be a unit, it's integrated with the market rate, it's delivered on the same time, all the beautiful things we love about inclusionary. I just want to call out, there's a lot of amazing things that you can do to really fill out your affordable housing program with the in-lu fee. The best practice would be to use it to leverage other state dollars in your a hundred percent affordable project. So if you have a big enough flow of in-lu fees, you have a lot of development happening, that's a really great use for it. If you're in a context where not a lot of fees are generated, either the market is down or you just have people choosing onsite instead, there's still some really fabulous uses for fees. Steve and I pulled these out of your housing element. These are just a few things of your, a few of your implementation programs that would be a really good match for like a small in-lu fund if you ever have found yourselves in that place. Okay, so the last place, our last recommendation is about the term of affordability. Currently, you all require the units to be affordable for fifty-nine years, which pretty much tracks with a nationwide trend. But what we're seeing in California and especially the Bay Area is jurisdictions are transitioning to making that requirement for ninety-nine years or for the life of the building. And this is one area where I know that many jurisdictions in the Bay Area are planning to make this change as a result of the six, six-cycle housing element. So I expect this list, when we're back in front of you in a year or so, to be much, much longer. But you see, there's nine jurisdictions with that currently having the ninety-nine year term of affordability. Okay, so the next thing we want to do is go over our recommendations. As a reminder, these four recommendations really are coming from both the housing element and then the work of the working group that we convened to really process and understand what needs to be done and how we can just tweak and improve your inclusionary program requirement, your inclusionary program. So there's four recommendations. The first one is about updating the onsite requirements. And there's a fee. And then we'll talk a little bit about improving the cluster agreements. And then finally, the term of affordability. So for the onsite requirements, your program currently requires fifteen percent affordability, four percent at fifty, four percent at eighty, seven percent at a hundred and ten. The housing element called for an inspection of that, especially talking about how the moderate income rental units are so close to market that there's questions of, are they offering a public good? And then there's questions of, are they able to be filled when tenants might choose to just seek housing in the private market? And we found data in your housing element that sort of backed that assertion up. And so we looked at, how could we rejigger the requirement? You'll notice that our, our recommendation, which is option three, reduces the total amount of affordable units down to ten percent. That, it can feel shocking, but it also makes sense. If you have seven units of mod income housing that's costing the developer very little to subsidize because the rent they're charging is so close to market that you can't really take that amount and then subsidize a number of eighty percent or forty percent units. So we worked really hard to keep the percentages close to fifteen percent while also trying to keep the overall financial impact or the feasibility of development pretty constant with your current program. And for that reason, we're recommending the ten percent at fifty, four, four percent at fifty and six percent at eighty. But as you'll see on this table, we explored a number of program options that are all generally consistent with the current feasibility. And so I would expect this, this board and the community and other decision-making bodies to have a good discussion about which policy outcome is, is the best match for you all. And I think this, this menu of options would all be feasible outcomes from a development perspective. For the ownership projects, we looked at moving them all up to that mod. Again, this is about making sure the program matches the user and making sure that, you know, you have units that can be occupied by, by households. They can access the, the good. So we found that the cost of complying with your current program is quite astronomical. And most folks were not able to build the onsite fifty and eighty percent AMI units. So we are recommending that instead of that, you look at a higher percentage of affordability and keeping them all at the mod level. If you were going to have a decision that you wanted the compliance to track really closely, you would keep it at that eighteen percent really closely to the fee. However, if you wanted to get just a little bit more affordable housing, you could consider twenty percent inclusionary. That would be ten or fifteen percent more cost, but you would get more ownership units. And we're recommending that option. But again, this is a policy discussion for you all. Okay, going on to the fees, currently, your, your jurisdiction makes a fee available only for small projects. And we're recommending that you do make a fee available for all project sizes. Again, for the rental product, we're suggesting that thirty-five dollars per square foot is a good number. It's a number that we think, matching with our recommendation for onsite, it would cost just a little bit more than the current onsite requirement. So you're tilting a little bit towards having folks do onsite. But if you have a developer that's like really committed to doing the fee and wants to do a hundred percent market, it's not, it's not going to be cost prohibitive for them to choose the fee. That's a policy discussion for you. We're eager to hear your direction on how you want that sort of comparison to land. Okay. And for the ownership product, we're looking at a fee rate of thirty-five or fifty. Again, the fee rate, it's a little bit, we're, we're doing a lot of comparison for you in this table. You see the double and the triple, that's compared to the current fee rate on small projects. When you compare the thirty-five and the fifty to the, the cost of onsite compliance, it's still going to be more affordable. So we think that these, you could even go to the fifty dollars per square foot for ownership products and still have a feasible viable option for a fee program for developers. And Steve had a little bit of an, in his intro, some comments about the cluster option. We learned a lot about how developers have been really attracted to this option in Alameda generally, sometimes in the city proper and sometimes on the, the base. But this is an option where the developer gives land and resources but doesn't build the units or just pay a fee directly. And you guys have been really successful and creative in getting these, getting affordable housing built and more affordable housing than you might otherwise through this process. We are recommending just some updates and some specific criteria for approving those. We want to make sure that you don't have the problem of so much land that you can't actually compete for the state money you need to get the housing built. So checking in with Health and Human Services, Housing and Human Services and the Housing Authority before the city makes a decision to accept land, and also thinking about that competitiveness and making sure that the land is a better or equivalent deal to the other compliance options. And finally, again, just simply the term of affordability. So again, we just think, we're seeing jurisdictions all across the Bay Area consider this. We've heard from developers, certainly homeowner, homeownership program, the first sale, the developer is out, so there's no impact to any, no financial impact to anyone if you extend that term of affordability to ninety-nine years or the life of the building. And most market rate developers have told us that they're not looking at the financial picture of ninety-nine years from now. So there isn't going to be an immediate impact on development or the feasibility of development if you extend the term. So those are our four recommendations. We're, I'm very excited to be here and have a great conversation with all of you and here for questions and discussion. I'll hand it back to Steve, who was going to talk through this last slide.
Yeah, I just wanted to have this sort of summary of the overall range of recommendations. You know, these are preliminary recommendations based on our consultant's professional opinion and conversations we've all had and kind of our understanding of, of the marketplace in Alameda. But there's plenty of room for, you know, considering different variables and options in each of these categories. And we'll obviously be also working with the city council to get their feedback as well. So we do want to at least hear your thoughts or certainly, certainly your questions as well if you have some.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation and for teeing us up for, I guess we'll start with clarifying questions. Board Member Huh?
Yeah, I have some questions. First of all, I appreciate the analysis. I think it's a very good job, and I appreciate, I was on the subcommittee with, with President Sisneros. And I appreciate that the consultant and staff have been very responsive to the comments received by everyone on the committee. I do have some clarifying questions. Table C sixteen is listed, the fair market rents. What, what income level are we talking about? Be good to clarify that in the table. Are we talking about moderate or low income as far as the fair, fair market? The HUD rents, what are they based on?
Let me pull up the table while we...
Not sure which table is C.
Oh, table, table C dash sixteen on page four. I think, I think those are the moderate rent levels, but...
Oh, 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 from the housing element. These are from the housing element. And so yes, these are...
So what percentage household income does that represent?
The fair market rent?
Yeah.
For HUD? I honestly don't know.
So it seems like it might be the moderate or is it the eighty percent or the hundred twenty?
I, I believe that would be sixty percent because that's a section eight fair market rent.
Is that what it is, sixty percent?
Yeah.
It'd be good to clarify that in the table.
Okay.
Because that would be helpful. Let's see, I just have a comment, question. This is just, just a clarifying question, it's not that, probably not that significant. But in figure one on page eight, where you compare, you know, different categories, U S, California, and Massachusetts. I'm just curious, why Massachusetts in, in the, in the eighty-one to eighty, or what, I'm not really... Eighty-one to eighty, or what, I'm not really, fifty-one to eighty percent. Why there's such a large blue bar? Is it just that there's so many little small townships or something?
Yeah, if I could share, which I can't right off the top of my head, but I'll certainly circulate to you guys a map of the programs, um, across the country. And you'll see that New Jersey, Massachusetts, and California have the most density of programs and the highest frequency. And part of it is like policy history. There's also a number of states in the nation that have bans or limitations on inclusionary. Um, whereas those three states rely heavily on inclusionary housing.
So if I've been reading it right, does that mean, I mean, the reading like the California, you know, is that dark blue bar is a pretty small bar? But the bar for Massachusetts is huge, is larger than all of the US. So I'm kind of wondering, w- w- why is that? That doesn't seem to.
So this is a survey of jurisdictions that have inclusionary. And so they're just talking about of the two hundred and nine jurisdictions or however many, no, a thou, couple thousand that answered it, what percent of them are from Massachusetts? Or the number of programs? So you see there's like two hundred programs in Massachusetts that have fifty to eighty for rental. So that's telling you that there's two hundred jurisdictions in Massachusetts that have inclusionary that answered the question and also have, um, that AMI.
Okay. Wow, must be all these little small townships because Massachusetts is, you know, relatively tiny, especially compared to California. Okay, thanks for. Um, one question I had, and I think this came up in our, the prior planning commission discussion. And I'm really thinking about the ownership housing. Did you explore the share equity model and what other cities may have done? Because I know there's, there's been debates in the past about, you know, one hundred percent, you know, affordable requirements, or some cities consider a share equity model to allow for accumulation of, of wealth with the argument that they could gain some of the advantages of a typical, you know, homeowner that buys a market rate housing. So did you explore that option? Have any thoughts about that model?
Yeah, we didn't explore, um, the shared equity option here. We were really focused, as you recall, on the tasks identified in the housing element. I would say that there are jurisdictions that sometimes, I think the question you're asking is, you have a homeownership program, there's a spectrum of, of delivering that could be pure equity building and you'll give all the wealth to the first homeowner. I don't think there's many jurisdictions that do that. Or it could be pure affordability where there's not a lot of equity grown over time for the homeowner. And most programs land somewhere in the middle. And I, we've seen a lot of jurisdictions get to that, not by exploring sort of a new model of building it or a limited equity, but, but in their pricing formula and their resale pricing formula, they're able to say how much equity, um, a household can accrue and be more, more generous or keep more price controlled based on that piece.
I, I'll just say, um, we could ask Simone Falls for more information on that, but we do have the regulatory program guidelines as well. And I believe there is a component of, um, the resale equity share.
Oh, it would be good to understand what that is. And in light of the fact that there's a proposal to maybe extend the term of the affordability level to ninety-nine years of ownership versus maybe it's now about thirty years or so, you know? Maybe after a certain number of years, there could be a shared equity if the homeowner holds onto the property long enough. Just kind of, just a thought out there. And then just kind of one, uh, clarification regarding figure two, recent housing and housing feasibility studies. Just to let you know, San Mateo County, the Grand Nexus study, I, I'm part of the Twenty-One Elements Working Group for that. They haven't actually published their inclusionary housing ordinance. I think the thought was March was the, 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 or, or you're talking about a study that was done in two thousand and sixteen? A really old one then?
Yeah, so the dates are kind of off on the right, but we, we know the Grand Nexus study is underway. This is the V one and you're talking about V two, um, for San Mateo County.
Okay, yeah, twenty. Yeah, those are, those are probably quite dated already, you know? They generally only have an aged life of less than five years. But anyway, just wanted to kind of clarify that one. The hope is, by the way, that San Mateo County will get their updated housing feasibility analysis done by, by this fall, so. But that might be too late for this study. But maybe not as relevant either because San Mateo housing prices are probably the highest, one of the highs in the Bay Area. Okay, let's see. Oh, I have a question regarding, I see for ownership housing, I see a one hundred ten figure and a hundred twenty percent figure. So could you clarify for me, what is the proposal for setting the housing price versus the income qualification level? I ask that because some programs set the housing price at one hundred ten, but the household that can qualify for the unit can make up to a hundred twenty percent median income. And that allows for the additional costs for HOA dues, utility costs and that kind of thing. So I see both a hundred twenty in the staff report and a hundred ten in the, I think, consultant report. So what is, what are we proposing to use as the basis for setting the housing price? Hundred ten or one twenty?
I think you're picking up on, on our, our distinction there correctly. And we did talk about this in the working group, so you're probably remembering that. But we were proposing pricing at one ten and income at one twenty, just to give you a little room there.
Yeah, yeah, good, good. That's kind of, that, might want to clarify that in the ordinance to make sure that's understood. Okay, sorry, I'm just kind of going through my notes. Okay, I don't know, I have a comment, but I don't know what it was. Let's see. Okay, then I have a couple of general questions towards the end. Oh, one question I had was maybe it's already in the ordinance or it's not within the scope of what the consultant is being asked to do. But does our current ordinance have a requirement that affordable units need to be comparable in unit mix to the market rate units? And are there criteria about, uh, the distribution of the units within the project? I assume that's the case, so that's why the consultant hasn't addressed those issues.
Yes, that's right. Brian and I were actually just talking before the meeting about how diligent, uh, our regulatory program is and making sure that that actually happens.
Oh, okay, good, good. And then I have a, a question regarding setting the rental housing at ten percent. I understand the logic of it. If, I think in the committee meeting, there was a feeling is just maintain the current financial, um, you know, burden or liability for the developer, which, which is why, once you eliminate the moderate, it drops it down to ten percent. But when you looked at, at the survey of other cities, is most cities at ten percent or fifteen percent inclusion requirement for rentals? I know it varies depending on what their income requirements are.
Yeah, um, well, in Alameda County, most jurisdictions are actually at fifteen percent. Steve can flip back to that slide somehow. Again, though, I, I know that, um, this is reflecting data prior, this is the ownership. There you go, most, but I know that, um, most cities are a little bit cautious and needing to go look at their inclusionary now. They're cautious because this isn't a great market to be doing a feasibility study. You're probably very familiar with that through your work on the Grand Nexus as well as our committee. But some jurisdictions are considering a drop. I also caution folks to look at the six programs that are requiring fifteen percent and seeing them as the same because the actual financial implications of the different levels of affordability are quite meaningful. So they're not all just like hitting that bar, as it were. It's very easy to require fifteen percent affordable, like in Union City where the program is mostly mods or mostly low income. That's way more feasible than, say, um, a program like Hayward's, which is five percent, you know, is, is only like the lower income level, say. So.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's kind of of apples and oranges. Depending on what their income requirement is and then based on the economics of each city. Thanks, so those are my questions for now.
Thank you. Does anyone else have, uh, questions for staff or the consultant? Uh, board member Sue?
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, one question I had is just about the kind of cluster development approach. Is there anything in the ordinance that kind of guides that right now in terms of how that's supposed to be carried out? Or has that just been carried out kind of like on ad hoc basis?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty ad hoc. It depends on, um, whether there's a development agreement sort of program involved where there's other sorts of negotiations going on as well about infrastructure, public facilities and things like that. Or if there's public land that is being swapped, say, in the tidelands. So there's a lot of variables in these clustered projects as well as large plots like at Alameda Point.
And, um, for these projects are, is the kind of like, you know, if the developer's like providing land and since, is it, is it been mostly, or like what's been kind of the mix of terms of the land provided? Is it oftentimes like adjacent to the property they're developing on? Or is it oftentimes like offsite somewhere else?
It's generally sort of onsite in the grand scheme of things. But typically a, a separate parcel is created and then a nonprofit developer takes the lead from there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it'd be interesting to hear more about, you know, how, how much commitment, I guess, the city is trying to get before they decide like, oh, this is sufficient enough. And I think that's kind of some of the questions that the, the report raises. And I think some jurisdictions have, uh, written into their ordinance, like in order to do a land swap or to have that kind of deal, you need to meet X, Y, and Z. And I think that's kind of what this report is getting at, but it'd be helpful to look at some of that. But I also kind of understand that, you know, sometimes you just don't, you may not know enough and it still might be a good enough, a good enough deal to go through with it. So I think there's a balancing of like, you know, how much certainty do we want, do we want versus, um, you know, just being able to get, get the land and or whatever other benefits we're getting.
Yeah, I think the consultant did try to estimate based on what we could glean from, um, the Housing Authority, for instance, as a, as a co-developer, um, sort of the, the land value and the cash contribution.
Actually, just one question on that too is, um, the Housing Authority, is that something every city has? I always thought that that was like a county, um, agency. And I was always interested to see that the city has one. I don't know if you know anymore about that and why the city specifically has, has one. I'm pretty sure some jurisdictions don't, don't have one. It's maybe because they don't manage affordable housing and that might be the simple answer.
I don't know the whole history.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll just add that it, it is unusual for a city to have its own housing authority. My experience has been that that is generally an agency that lives in, in the county government. And then I just wanted to, to add on to Steve's comment about the offsite. There is a small provision in our existing ordinance that authorizes offsite construction, uh, according to the, um, approval by the planning board. And there are some criteria, but it's, it's a pretty modest provision and, and, you know, you may want to beef up those requirements either in the guidelines or in the ordinance itself.
And do you know off the top of your, how many kind of these cluster development deals the city has done, say, in like the last ten years or so?
Well, it's a little complicated because this study that we're talking about here, just to clarify also, doesn't apply to Alameda Point because it has a settlement agreement that requires twenty-five percent inclusionary.
Yeah.
At a different program and there's different land and infrastructure considerations there. But in terms of not on Alameda Point, um, I can think of what, half a dozen?
That's great. Okay, just another question I thought of, um, you know, I, kind of this discussion about, uh, ownership. No, sorry, I think it's, it's the rental units that are having a hard time being rented out that are set to kind of mid, mid-income because people would rather just go get a mid-income market rate unit. Do we have a lot of those that are still currently vacant? And is there a possibility to like change those to become low income because they've been vacant so long? So that they can come to, you know, eighty percent AMI or sixty percent AMI, um, just so that we can, we can fill those units?
Well, it's an interesting idea. I guess it would, it would probably be related to this study in terms of what's the equivalence of seven percent mod versus, say, four percent, uh, low or some, some swap like that. But yeah, that, that's an interesting idea.
Okay, and are you, are you saying kind of to that idea is that if we did a swap, then like the developer might get some of those units back as market rate? Because now they're kind of offering those at like lower incomes, so they're not, like, that would be equivalent of them offering more moderate units? Is that kind of what you're kind of saying in terms of your comment just now?
I, I guess it would depend on what's the real subsidy that we're talking about. Per.
Right.
Unit. And we don't really have a provision in the ordinance for that. So we would need to, you know, sort of modify some approvals and, and, um, you know, I guess it's, it's doable.
Could be worth looking into if they're sitting around, yeah.
I can just add that some of our clients have provisions that say if you can't rent it at the rate, it's kind of the developer's responsibility to lower it. Um, and what they can do is lower it when the market is low and then bring it back up to, say, eighty or one twenty when, when that's possible and the unit is vacant. So there's lots of ways that people solve that conundrum, their jurisdictions, or solve that.
Just one more question. When we talk about life of the project now, if we're saying it's going to be life of the project for ninety-nine years, life of the project, I would assume means until the building is like demolished? Is that the kind of, the idea?
Yeah, that's the idea.
Forever, yeah.
Forever, however long that is.
Yeah.
We would phrase it whichever is greater.
Whichever is. Yeah, I guess if the building is replaced, uh, those entitlements would carry forward or be replaced? We would, we'd have to see how that goes.
Yeah, well, when I was in private practice, developers would just joke like, that's not my, my problem. Like ninety-nine years from now, they're like, they're long gone, so. And I think the report kind of hinted at that too, they're thinking more short term. And so like for them to say fifty versus ninety, they're like, you know, whatever, the fi, the finances have already penciled out for me, so.
Just aside, I, I don't know if the fifty-nine years was to avoid some sort of sixty-year threshold on. It's, it's as if you were an owner, if you have a sixty-year lease on something.
Yeah, the, the rule against perpetuities, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how it applies to this, um, particular area, but I know that cities are extending the requirement to ninety-nine years. So I'm sure it's gone through legal review.
Great, yeah, thank you so much for those questions. Any other questions? No? Okay, um, my fellow board members got to some of the ones I were thinking about. I guess somewhat on theme to some of these, um, questions brought up. I understand the recommendation, what is it for, um, the rental inclusion areas, the four and six percent? What would be the argument for the hundred percent, um, AMI? Like, I think the report mentioned something to the effect of there's folks that make too much money in order to qualify for subsidies, but don't make enough to afford the market rate rents. But I don't know, I was wondering if, um, either staff or the consultant could say a little bit more about that?
Well, I, I think that's exactly the, the, the trade-off. The ten percent, uh, also at five and five, maybe that's just easier math, um, at VLI and LI. Uh, also at five and five, maybe that's just easier math um uh at VLI and LI. Um, or the four, four and four, also just easy to remember. Um, but also the 100% AMI, I think, is targeting just slightly lower where we might actually have people that qualify and need the unit.
Mm hmm.
Rather than 120.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there was some concern that um that there might be households that are missed in the housing ladder if we didn't include a little bit of 100%. And, you know, a good next step would be to do some more robust market research or analysis of the housing element data to see if that's coming to pass. And I know um the folks at Housing and Human Services had some some households they had in mind. And so that's another place so that we could um think more about if if that decision um that information could be helpful to decision makers.
Along those lines, I for the ownership column, I did want to note that um HHS staff did have a a little bit of a reservation of just um putting all our eggs in the moderate basket in this category, that they they still do believe that there are some households at the lower income levels that can qualify and and can uh carry the costs, the the extra costs of homeownership and benefit from that um opportunity to have that stability and and um ownership.
The health, what was it? HH?
Housing and Human Services.
Housing and Human Services, yeah.
It's a city. It's a city department that that uh enters into the regulatory agreements with the developers.
It'd be nice to get some data on that because that's not what I'm hearing Bay Area-wide.
The 80% AMI?
Yeah, yeah, it's difficult for for to get ownership uh candidates at that level.
And and I believe that's what the housing element concluded as well, and that's why we're part of why we're doing this study. But it's just, I just wanted to note that she Simone did express this concern that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm open if there's some fallate financial analysis that shows that 80% households can't actually afford to buy and maintain one of these units. And, you know, it's a huge subsidy, you know? And that's the other argument, is it better to use those that huge subsidy for 80% unit for, you know, say, five low-income rental units, you know? So that's, I think we talked about that at the committee meeting.
Yeah, I think you I think you hit that point really well and, you know, when you when the report makes clear that for the ownership units, if you're even for the moderate, you're subsidizing on the order of half a million dollar for a single household. That's getting the benefit of of those ownership uh inclusionary units. And for a very low, you're up to potentially $900,000 sort of subsidy going to one household. And like you said, if you split that, take that as like an in-lufy and use that $900,000, the Housing Authority could potentially get 10 units for that, you know, same at a at a lower, at those same affordability levels.
Yeah, that's an interesting, that would be like an interesting analysis to look at just, yeah, to see the value of that and what the trade-offs are, I guess. Um, that's helpful. And and sorry, um, Mr. Buckley, you said, and the housing element demonstrated already that not many households at the 80% AMI necessarily um.
I believe that was part of the discussion, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then my other question was um that there was case making for the um in-lufy to be calculated by square foot versus by unit. So I was just wondering um what the logic was for the smaller projects to keep it at that per-unit um basis? The the nine units or less, is is it just because it's working or?
I think fundamentally, it was just not to upset the the system. Kirsten, do you have more to add?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I mean, that isn't something that we discussed at length at the committee. There could be benefits to moving it over, but as Steve said, a lot of stakeholders get used to a certain way of calculating. But zooming out to why we're going to the per-square-foot basis, um, if it's a unit and a unit, then the size of the unit isn't captured. So a three-bedroom unit and a one-bedroom unit are contributing the same fee. Um, and that's why we wanted to have it be more accurately um tracking the value of the unit for the larger projects. Um, for the smaller projects, um, we could look at that, but financial variations might be a little different. Um, and the stakeholder group might feel slightly different about it, the development stakeholder group, that is.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
I might add a point on that, you know, under under the new state law, you know, that was, I think, winter effect in 2023 for impact fees, which doesn't include include any housing. Cities are required to convert their per-unit fee to square footage or some equivalent proportional. So I think it makes sense that for consistency, you know, the housing in-lufy's would kind of reflect a similar type of formula on a per-square-foot basis. And the argument I've heard is that um it doesn't, by doing square foot, doesn't penalize the smaller units. You know, because under the per-unit basis, a studio apartment would pay the same fee as, say, a three-bedroom apartment. So it it disincentivizes, at least for lufys, disincentivizes the smaller units, which are sometimes highly needed for affordable housing purposes. Anyway, that's the argument I've heard.
Yeah. Um, it seems like we're naturally moving into the discussion component of this workshop. So I kind of just wanted to open it up and um.
If I may, we also need public comment?
Oh.
Maybe we can interrupt your discussion with public comment.
Of course, of course. I'm like, oh, we have a little mojo here. Uh, okay. Thank you so much for answering our questions. And with that, do we have a public comment?
Give folks a second if they want to raise their hand, but I do not believe we have any speakers on this item.
Nothing.
No speakers.
With that, we'll close public comment and we'll now move into discussion or feedback, um reflections from the report. Now, if anyone would like to start, uh, Board Member Sahiba.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, no, I appreciate the thorough presentation and and a very thorough report. I I really think that as we look at this, and I know there's different, um, I appreciate that we're looking at multiple jurisdictions locally and nationwide on how to tackle this. It seems to me that when we looked at our housing element plan and really um studied the different ways to increase housing and then affordability as as something that we're focusing more on here, we should continue to engage with the developer community. And I'm and, you know, it's not a question, it's more just commentary that the, you know, the different ways that we can help trigger the development of all these units, I mean, market rate and affordable, is figuring out, you know, what? Things vary in the marketplace, of course, and things vary with economy and and other aspects that, you know, are more um global than than local. And I would say that as we continue these discussions, I know that we've got in the report sites that we've got projects in the pipeline that haven't yet come to materialize. I would say that I don't know which agency in in the city um would would spearhead this, but it'd be good to understand what are the triggers that would help unlock some of the projects that have stalled? And and if any policies that we're considering here, um, and, you know, moving percentages one way or the other would start to have a bigger impact on that um specific ability for us to produce this housing. Obviously, with um developers who are ready to to start moving on it. So I think um all these trends are good from different jurisdictions and such. Um, I I think what would be good to influence a little bit more of our discussion is uh getting some good feedback from the development community, whether it's locally in our jurisdiction or or adjacent jurisdictions, to see what's what's working. I I mean, I will say this from my own experiences in different jurisdictions. There's um definitely different triggers, whether it's the timeline it takes to develop, whether it's um, you know, very clear strategies that are in place or even, you know, various fees that are that are um, you know, worked out and negotiated. And, you know, we are in a kind of influx time where um I think the development community wants to get things moving, but are still held back a little bit just through um policy um discussions that haven't yet quite moved the needle in a direction that will will unlock some of the stuff. So um, yeah, that's that's all my, that's really my commentary is if the, I think the report can become a bit more multifaceted through uh the lens of looking at it from, you know, actual people who will produce the housing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, any other board members? Uh, Board Member Sue?
Um, so overall, I think uh staff and the consultant um doing a great job. I uh I agree with with all the recommendations, you know, um, the adjustment to income requirements based on current housing needs and market conditions, um, expanding availability of the in-lufy. Um, also the the, you know, this criteria on on clustered units and then also the period of affordability. I'm uh, it's, I guess, amazed that, um, you know, just looking at the increase in the in-lufy from ownership that would be under our other proposal from, you know, $17.87 to 30 or 50. But it, you know, it seems like based on the report that it would still make sense. Um, I just thought that was interesting. It's such a such a big increase. There was some discussion, I think, in the report, maybe just even now, about making, um, you know, with like uh ownership units where if you say you set it to, you know, 80% AMI affordability, that's how much the unit would cost, but you still you allow it up to, you know, anyone up to like 100, 120% AMI to purchase the unit. Um, I think that's a, it's an interesting idea and concept that I think is worthy of kind of a little more discussion. You know, I I think there's this kind of discussion to be had about whether by doing that, are you, you know, kind of effectively maybe shutting out some people who are more at the lower income at an 80% AMI? Because now you have 120% AMI, you know, income folks who can who can who are competing with them. But then maybe you're just kind of making it that the the unit, you know, available to more people and giving it more opportunity for for someone to end up buying it. I will be interested in seeing, I I think um the overall kind of clustered development, clustered units, to kind of see a little more of the language that comes out in terms of developing kind of more of the specific requirements. But I think that's definitely uh something worth exploring more. Um, I had one more comment, but I can't remember it, so I will. That's enough for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And Board Member Huh?
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, good report. And I generally agree with um most of the recommendations. There are some areas that I would like to see a reconsideration, and I'll point out what those are. But first of all, I think the rental units um understand, I think the goal was to not incur a greater financial burden on developers at this time since the finding is that projects are not feasible anyway and it could be down in the road, down the road when it could be reevaluated. But using that as the premise of not increasing the financial impact on developers. I like the four and six percent, uh, the 10% figure that's comparable to the current ordinance. The reason why I I like dropping the moderate rate units because as the study concludes, you know, there's not much of a subsidy required for the moderate income rental units. Plus, I look at the housing element and the huge need for very low and low-income units is are critical in the city and these rental units can certainly, is not going to solve the problem. But by emphasizing placing priority on rental units in that category, I think, is the right policy direction to go. Uh, for the ownership units, I'm I'm I, for for economic reasons, I like the idea of like what most cities are doing of going towards moderate income households as the inclusion requirement to reduce the the huge subsidy that's required. What I would like reconsideration is, I know that the $50,000 in-lufy option is like triple what we currently have. But currently, these projects, unless they're small projects, are not allowed to do inclusionary units. The concern I have with the $50,000 figure, which the consultant mentioned, most cities keep it kind of equal or for policy reasons, they might provide some flexibility. But the $50 figure is like 20% or more below um the 18% inclusion requirement. So what that tells me is developers are going to do their math and they're going to more logically go within lufy option, which could, it has its benefits because you can use it for clustered housing projects and et cetera. But then it kind of defeats or minimizes or disincentivizes the option for ownership, affordable ownership units. So I'm more inclined to say try to keep the lufy option for the ownership units comparable or maybe at 10% less. Like, for instance, if we go with the 20% inclusion requirement, maybe you set the in-lufy at the 18% level. Otherwise, basically, it's almost an illusion to sit, to have a 20% or 18% inclusion requirement when the lufy, basically, you're just, you're reducing it by 20%, so you're only getting 15%. So to me, that's too much of a gap and you're not gonna, there's not going to be an incentive to create ownership units, in my opinion. Um, so from a policy standpoint, I could see trying to provide differential there, you know? But 20% seems like too big of a gap to me. Then I do have one question. What's the rationale? I I know the current in-lufy calculated is 27, this is for rental units, I'm shifting. And and lufy is 27,500, but so what, or 25, I forgot what it was. Why? Why are we suggesting increasing the in-lufy to $35 per square foot? Because I'm I'm thinking on the same line, wouldn't it be maybe desirable to keep it relatively equal so that so you can negotiate with the developers? There might be one project where you prefer the lufys, another project where you want to increase the and or make ensure there's inclusionary units. But when there's a disincentive within lufys in this case, then, you know, maybe from a policy standpoint, you really want to emphasize the inclusionary units within a rental project. Just kind of wonder why the the rationale for the recommendation to to make the in-lufy much higher than the actual costs for producing an inclusionary unit for a rental project.
Yeah, I I think you hit the nail on the head. It's it's basically a disincentive to pay the fee on rental units because they are being developed now and they're being rented successfully at those lower income levels. So um the more we can get of those, the better.
Okay.
The fees could probably come in for those projects where that's just how it works out better for them.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. I'm just kind of wondering why that's the case. Um, and then some general comments. Some general comments. Um, I mentioned before, I I like exploring the shared equity model, especially if you are going to increase the affordability term for ownership units to 99 years. You know, maybe, you know, I know it gets more complex, but maybe the shared equity can phase in after an owner owns a unit for, you know, say, 20 years or so. Because there's been an argument that you're perpetually keeping that household in a subsidized condition because they're not going to be have enough equity in their home to move up to a market rate unit unless there's some equity. And the whole point is to try to uh improve upward mobility, like all of us benefit from the equity we build up in our homes. So having affordable households sometime somehow. equity we build up in our homes, so having affordable households sometime, somehow have a shared equity model, and it's not necessarily one hundred percent or zero, some cities do this fifty-fifty or some percentage share, so it'd be good to kind of look into that. I do agree with the comment about having maybe the need for greater criteria for clustering, the clustered option, you know, maybe, you know, the unit size, or what is considered a comparable cluster development, if it's, if you're using, say, ownership in-loofe's to produce, say, equivalent rental units, you know, it's not a one-to-one type of ratio, so some criteria for that, and I like the suggestion that the consultant put in the report about needing to demonstrate development feasibility for a cluster option, because I've, I've been in cases where a site is dedicated to the city, and it sits there for many years, because you can't get the funding to develop the cluster option, and then unfortunately, with, at least in the next couple of years, it looks like federal funding for affordable housing projects are going to be curtailed significantly, so it's even more important that a clustered option is proved to be financially feasible somehow, get demonstrated. What some cities also consider a locational criteria, that the clustered housing needs to be with, in the general, same general neighborhood or region, so you can't just suddenly do a clustered housing project, you know, across, you know, put them all in like, say, west Alameda, say, you know, so having some, some, some criteria about where they're located relative to the project might be something to consider, I don't know, maybe that becomes too restrictive, but something to consider, but generally, the idea of having some criteria for the clustered housing makes sense. I like the idea of the flexibility was kind of raised about, you know, if there are vacant units, you know, requiring the developer to rent them out, even if it requires them to lower the rent somewhat, so that they're not sitting on a vacant unit. Two other things, I know it's outside of scope of what the developer, what the consultant has, has the scope of their work, but, and this may already be covered in the city's housing inclusion ordinance, but whether there's a preference requirement for these units, you know, I know there's fair housing requirements need to be carefully considered, so usually it's just a more of a marketing kind of situation, trying to provide preference to residents that already live in Alameda or work in Alameda, so that might already be in the ordinance, I don't know, I'm just bringing that up. And, and then bringing up a final thing is, under, another new state law that came up is that for most residential projects, they qualify to allow their, their fees to be paid at occupancy, I don't know when the city collects the inclusionary fees, but new state law for many residential, for most residential projects says you can only collect it at occupancy stage now, and that also, I think, projects that qualify under SB three thirty, the fees are locked in at predevelopment stage, you know, so somehow having those parameters probably need to be spelled out in the updated ordinance, so those are my comments, but I think there are really good progress on this report, so I appreciate the information today.
Thank you, thank you to my fellow board members for those great comments, and looking through the report and the feedback, and thank you to the staff and consultant for bringing this to us, and having some great information to think through, and I'm in agreement with a lot of the comments already made, I'm generally in agreement with the recommendations put forward, and I do appreciate both the comments made about zooming out and just thinking about what's the intended outcome of this, and which is to have more housing units, have more affordable housing units, so I just really appreciate fellow board members bringing that up. And, yeah, I guess just maybe parsing through some of the things, that, some of the themes were, that were brought up with the rental inclusionary, I would be interested in having more analysis on what, bumping it up to the hundred percent AMI, four percent at mod, although, again, I am leaning towards what the consultant already recommended, I think there is, it is going to be important, I think, for us to consider the framing of this, because it maybe doesn't look politically great, dropping from fifteen percent to ten percent without explaining like, hey, this is dropping the AMI households that don't really require that subsidy, so we're prioritizing these households that really would benefit from this program, so that's just something for us, I think, to think about as we move forward in this process, and, plus one on maybe more information on what this cluster recommendation is putting forward, like, I almost, like, feel like I need, like, some examples, like, what are the potential criteria pieces that we would want to think about, because it does seem like it is working pretty well, and it is a helpful tool for our housing authorities, so just seeing how this fits in into this larger piece of the pie when it comes to the in-loofe's and the inclusionary, I'm just curious about, just a little bit more on this cluster recommendation, and, yeah, I think those are all my comments, and I also appreciate the suggestions of like, maybe some regulatory fixes, or, not fixes, but analysis, for example, offering the units at a lower rate when it's not renting out, so on and so forth, so just appreciate all those insights. Yeah, so I think those are all my comments, and, yeah, thank you again to staff, the consultant, and my fellow board members for all your perspectives.
Thank you very much, that's very helpful. So as I mentioned, we will be coming back to you in the relatively near future, I hope, with a little bit more of a real sort of ordinance, perhaps with some options built into the text, and we'll also be responding to your comments and discussion today, so thank you.
Great, and did you have any, like, follow-up or clarifying questions for us before we wrap up, or no? You, you got it all?
No, I...
You're a great no-taker, so...
No, I think that was all very helpful, good questions and good suggestions, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, and with that, we'll go ahead and close this agenda item, and we'll move on to, I guess, sorry, I got confused with some of these adjustments made, five C, or the use permit item that's being continued.
Yes, five C, the temporary use permit is continued off calendar, we'll notice that when it's ready to be heard.
Okay, great, so we'll go ahead and...
The IP is next, right?
Close that.
No, I wasn't concerned.
Do we?
Yeah, they voted.
I think so, Paul.
Sue.
Okay, okay.
Okay, do we, do we need to open it up for public comment or anything? No?
No.
Okay, all right, moving on, thank you, that closes our regular agenda items, and then we'll move on to staff communications.
Yes, as usual, item six A, you have a page in your packet that lists the projects that were recently approved at the staff level, you have three design review applications that are routinely delegated to staff, those are in their appeal period, and item six B, I don't really have anything to report. Yeah, I'll just mention, we are going to be meeting at your next regular meeting for a use permit modification.
Okay. The Ensignal Terminal?
Oh, no, and that, and that would be for a gas station on Central Avenue.
Okay, great, any comments, if not, open up for a public comment?
We have no speakers.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Great, thank you for staff communications report, any board communications? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, any public comment on that? Nope, all right, closing that item, non-agenda public comments, if anyone would like to speak about an item that was not agendized tonight, may do so now for three minutes, seeing none, we'll close that, and with that, we are adjourned, thank you.